Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to this joint public hearing, October 13th, 2025. Is there approval of the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. New business.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So I'll start by just reading the rules for the public hearing. So the public hearing is an opportunity for the public to express their ideas, concerns, and opinions regarding the proposed request to the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board. The Board of Commissioners, Planning Board, and staff will not engage in dialogue at this time. If the public has questions pertaining to the request, please contact town staff following the joint public hearing. Additionally, the process for tonight, we will have the staff slash applicant provide a general overview of the request. The Board of Commissioners will ask questions for clarification. The Planning Board will ask questions for clarification. The mayor will open joint public hearing. The public can make comments at that time, and then the mayor will close the joint public hearing. All right, so tonight we'll be discussing the Sheetz Plan Development Request, Plan Development Rezoning 2025-05. So the following standards are applicable for any Plan Development Request and must be considered when making a decision on a project, whether the project affects the public's health, safety, and welfare, whether it's appropriate for the location in which it's proposed, whether it's reasonable and in the public's interests, and any other relevant factors that the Board or Planning Board would like to bring up. And then as well, a reminder that with any Plan Development Request, that the request is better than the strict interpretation of the UDO standards. So that's in Section, UDO Section 3.5.5. So just a general overview of the property. The applicant is Sheetz Inc. The property owner is Old Heritage Properties. The property address is 1406 North Arrendal. Acreage is 2.15 acres. The current zoning is Heavy Commercial, HC, and the proposed zoning is for a Plan Development, PD. Public hearing, as with any public hearing, we must notify the public that the hearing is occurring to give ample opportunity for people to come and speak on the project. So public hearing signs were posted on all frontages. Milled notices were sent to the property owners within 750 feet of the proposed project, and then it was sent out to the paper of general circulation, as well as posted on the town's website. The current zoning for this site is Heavy Commercial, and it's part of the North Arrendal Corridor that has a number of different commercial uses and commercial zoning. Future land use shows a, as well shows general commercial, and so a commercial use is consistent with the future land use requirements for this piece of property. Timeline of activity, so the neighborhood meeting was held back in April on the 17th. The first application was submitted May 29th. The applicant, the comment letter was sent, first comment letter was sent out on July 8th, and then a TRC meeting was held July 9th. Submittal number two was submitted in August, on August 15th. The comment letter was sent out on September 2nd, and then the final submittal was made September 15th. And then the hearing, the hearing packet was posted on the town website this past Thursday on the 9th, and then the hearing packet was distributed on the 10th, and then tonight we're holding the joint public hearing. So currently, this site is already a Sheetz, and so this development request is for a redevelopment of the site. Some of the major changes being the addition of a drive-up window, the, an addition of an additional gas pump in the fuel island, and then the building will be completely redesigned and redeveloped, and the car wash will, will also no longer be there. So the proposed redevelopment, so this is the site plan for the proposed redevelopment, and I'll talk about this a little more in depth in the following slides, talking about some of those conditions that are being proposed with this Plan Development Request. So for a Plan Development Proposal in the following slides, I will outline the items that modify the ordinance as part of this request. When the project, when proposing a Plan Development, staff works with the applicant to achieve their proposed project with as few modifications to the ordinance as possible. It is the job of the applicant to describe the specific ways in which any modification to the generally applicable standard in this ordinance will result in a development of higher quality than would have otherwise resulted if the development was established without any proposed modifications to the standards of the ordinance. So in the following slides, I'll go through a couple of those modifications, and where, if they were to propose this project by right, where they would have to follow those requirements, and what the, what the development, what the developer is actually requesting as that modification. And the developer is also here tonight and will be giving a presentation where they can elaborate a little bit more as to their reasoning, why they propose certain conditions. So modifications. Through the Plan Development Process, the developer is able to request modifications from the ordinance. All developments in a Plan Development District shall comply with the department's standards, the development standards of Article 5, development standards in the subdivision and infrastructure design standards of Article 6 subdivisions, unless modified in accordance with this section. And so some of those items include in those sections is architectural requirements, landscaping, parking requirements, density and dimensional standards, circulation and site access requirements, and then use-specific standards. In the following slides, I'll go over the use-specific standards that are being requested to be modified, as well as the specific conditions that were requested, but you can reference the Plan Development Narrative as well for any additional dimensional standards or other requirements as part of this Plan Development Request. So when considering the uses, the question must be asked is, have, oh, sorry, the applicant has requested the following uses with some modifications to their specific requirements. So uses, within a Plan Development, allowed uses shall be established as part of the master plan. Allowed uses shall be consistent with the adopted policy guidance that, sorry, guidance, the purpose of the particular PD district, and subject to any additional limitations or requirements set forth in Section 4.3, Use-Specific Standards for the PD District. Nothing shall limit an applicant from seeking to modify an otherwise applicable use-specific standard in accordance with the standards in Section 3.5.5.2. Master plan is required. So the following uses have been slightly modified. So convenience store with gasoline sales, a retail establishment, is defined as a retail establishment which offers this, sorry, which offers for sale primarily the following types of articles: bread, milk, cheese, canned and bottled foods and drinks, tobacco products, beer, wine, candy, papers, and magazines, and general hardware articles. Gasoline and/or fast food may also be offered for sale, but only as a secondary activity for the convenience store and subject to the standards of this ordinance. If vehicular maintenance and servicing are provided, the establishment is not classified as a convenience store. So the following use-specific standards are, the following use-specific standards on this slide are applicable for anyone starting this use in a by-right process, but the applicant as part of their Plan Development Process has requested a variation from the condition of the pump islands may not be located between a building and any adjacent street right-of-way. As you can see in the site layout, they're, they are proposing some of those fuel islands, all those fuel islands to be between the street and the building. As well, they are proposing a drive-up window. Even though it won't have a call box, it's still considered a drive-through window per our standard, and so in order to comply with our ordinance, they're also requesting for a variation from the requirements of this section by requesting rather than meeting the mixed-use design standards, to follow the commercial design standards. So the following conditions have been proposed and are available to you in your packet. Let me see here. I wrote down where you can find them. On page 56 of your packet is where you can find these conditions, if you'd like to follow along. As well, the applicant has provided some of their reasoning for proposing the conditions in that section of the Plan Development Narrative. So condition one is that the fuel pumps in Canobie Island shall be located between the building and any adjacent street right-of-ways. Condition number two, no more than 60% of off-street parking will be located between the proposed structures, primary facade, and North Arendal Avenue. The standard in the ordinance, in the Unified Development Ordinance states that sites comprised of commercial buildings subject to these design standards shall be configured such that no more than 50% of the provided off-street parking shall be located between a building's primary building facade and the street it faces. Condition number two proposes the dumpster enclosure shall be located as shown on the site plan. The proposed dumpster shall be fully screened and enclosed. The enclosure shall be built consistently with the elevations attached here too, and made of a condition hereof. The enclosure shall be constructed with brick, concrete, masonry, and pressure-treated wood or reasonably similar quality materials to ensure an aesthetic consistency with the primary structure. This is not necessarily a modification to our ordinance, but typically we do see for site access and, and configuration, we often see the dumpster enclosure at the rear of the property, and so they're just providing this as a condition, as an elaboration on, on where the dumpster is being placed. Condition number four, so this is, the portion in red is referencing the commercial design standards because they're opting to follow the commercial design standards rather than the mixed-use design standards. So the primary wall/facade facing North Arendal will be occupied, the applicant has, has requested that the primary wall/facade facing North Arendal Avenue will be occupied by no less than 27% of visually transparent windows or doors. The applicant shall supplement with additional false/opaque windows and/or articulated wall forms. The requirement in the ordinance, if this project were to be a by-right project, would require that at least 40% of the first-floor portion of the primary wall is occupied by visually transparent windows or doors. Condition number five, the condition requested by the applicant is that the secondary wall/facade facing Pierce's Road will be occupied by no less than 24% of visually transparent windows or doors, false or opaque windows or articulated wall form. The requirement in the ordinance requires that the secondary building wall shall be configured so that at least 30% of the ground floor facade has visually transparent windows or doors or false or opaque windows. Condition number six requires that the street step, is asking that the street setback for Pierce's Road shall be 10 feet for the dumpster enclosure. We used a comparable district with this being a commercial site, looking at the heavy commercial standards, which requires a minimum setback of 30 feet for all structures on-site. But with any Plan Development Request, the requested, part of the request in the narrative shall include the dimensional standards, which include setbacks. So this is a request as part of that Plan Development. Condition number seven, the request of the applicant was that the side perimeter buffer for the boundary adjoining the property located at 1420 North Arendal, that's the ABC Store, pin number 1796919353, shall be three feet. Typically, from a heavy commercial to another heavy commercial zoning district, a type-A perimeter buffer with a width of 10 feet would be required. The applicant is proposing that the streetscape buffer along North Arendal Avenue and Pierce's Road be zero feet. The requirement would typically require a streetscape buffer, which would maintain a width of 15 feet from lot line, subject to the standards of a type-C buffer. And then condition number nine, this is the last condition, is that parking spaces 11, 12, 13, and 14 shall be permitted to be further than 50 feet from the trunk of a canopy tree. Planters shall be located along the sidewalk at the storefront to enhance landscaping for the parking area and for parking spaces 11, 12, 13, and 14. So the requirement in the UDO is that a required canopy tree may be placed around in or near the parking lot, provided that no parking space is more than 50 feet from the trunk of a canopy tree. So these were all the conditions that the applicant were, were proposing with this Plan Development Request. They are here and they will be doing a presentation right after this, probably about two slides from now, to kind of talk through their project a bit more, and they can answer any questions that you may have about that intent question that, that is asked with the Plan Development. So outcomes for this site, so improvements of, for the existing, outcomes if this Plan Development is approved, improvements for the existing convenience store with gasoline sales will take place. The rezoning from a heavy commercial zoning district to a Plan Development District will allow Sheets to add both a drive-through pickup window and one more fuel pump. The rezoning to PD will allow for the redevelopment of the site in a manner that mirrors the existing building orientation and site plan, resulting in a legally conforming project. And the site will be developed to an alternative form other than what is prescribed in the Unified Development Ordinance. So again, just to go over these standards one more time going into the discussion, so standards laid out in Section 2.2.2.5.J require you to consider the health, the public's health, safety, and welfare, whether the proposed request is appropriate for the location, whether the proposed request is reasonable and within the public's interest, and then any other relevant factors. And then a reminder, with any Plan Development Request, the Board must consider if it's better than the strict interpretation of the UDO standards, which is in UDO Section 3.5.5. So staff recommends opening the public hearing after the applicant's presentation, and then after the public hearing and discussion close, refer the matter to the Planning Board for consideration. So I'm going to let the applicant come up and, and share their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, members of the Planning Board. My name is Clint Cogburn. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm, Warden Smith, with offices at 82 Patton Avenue in Asheville, North Carolina. I'm here on behalf of the applicant this evening, which is Sheets. Here with me tonight as well are two members of our development team. The first is Mr. Bob Franks. He's an engineering and permit manager with Sheets. And also with us tonight is Ms. Heather Timothy. She's a project engineer and a civil engineer with Kim Lee Horn. To the extent that there are ultimately any questions, and I know that there's a delineated process here, but any of the three of us are happy to answer those questions, and obviously to the extent that I can't answer, I'll make sure to direct it to the appropriate member of our team that is here. So staff went through the existing zoning and conditions of the subject site. I don't want to belabor that point or cover, cover that ground again, but I do want to try to clarify some things for the Commission and the Board as we move forward. The proposal here is the redevelopment and rebuild of that existing Sheets location to include a pickup window and then the two additional fueling stations. Now, you've heard mention of a drive-through. We understand that in the UDO, that is the use that is delineated, but just to be clear here, this will be a pickup window, so it's not your traditional drive-through. There's no intercom system, there's no noise, there's no actual ordering as part of this. There's also no transactions, so there's no cash being exchanged or credit card being taken. Rather, it is just a pickup window to facilitate delivery of food, specifically for online orders or orders through the app. So when a customer comes up, a team member inside the Sheets is notified that, that somebody is in that drive aisle, and they come out and they bring that individual their food. So it's a lot less intense than your traditional drive-through and is intended to create ease of access for those customers and to get people in and out of the Sheets location easier, quicker, and without creating congestion specifically on the backside of this property. Additionally, the reason for the redevelopment, in addition to that proposed pickup window, is because the petroleum systems at this existing Sheet location require replacement. As you might expect, over time, they reach the end of their life cycle. The petroleum systems at this location are getting towards the end of their life cycle, and because of that, they can't, the site can't just be merely renovated. It does have to be rebuilt or redeveloped. So as part of that process, Sheets is proposing updating this location, creating what we submit is a improved product and improved design, and will, will create a, a better aesthetic presentation, both for those folks traveling along Arendal and Pierce's, but also customers visiting the site. So that's the reason why we have submitted this application and are asking for ultimately the approval of this request to the Plan Development District. So looking at the site plan, as we mentioned, what we're proposing is to demolish the existing site, and the structure will, will be rebuilt to 6,139 square feet. That's slightly larger than the existing footprint of the building, but not considerably larger. It's not going to be a towering structure. It will be located essentially where the existing structure is on the site. It will just be slightly larger. There is the additions again of that pickup window and the, the additional two pump locations. We are removing the, the existing car wash as part of that. We believe that that will be beneficial. It will create a better aesthetic, be more consistent across the building, but also reduce some of that activity towards the rear of the site. The, the subject property is currently zoned heavy commercial, and although we're proposing the Plan Development, I do want to mention both for the Commission and the Board that the uses that we are proposing are allowed by right in the heavy commercial district. Throughout proposing anything novel or unique here, both the convenience store with gas pumps or gasoline sales and the pickup window are permitted by right in heavy commercial, but because again of the combination of those and because of the, the flexibility we're asking in terms of the site layout and site design, that's why we're asking for approval under a Plan Development Design. We're not, again, proposing any change to the principal use. There's not going to be any outdoor noise or speakers associated with that pickup window. And one of the things Sheets looked at was whether or not these changes would, would create any additional appreciable traffic. A TIA was conducted, and what that revealed was 16 additional AM peak trips, 16 additional PM peak trips, so very negligible additional traffic. So it will largely operate the same, act the same from a traffic perspective. We submit that it will just be an improved layout and an improved design. So as part of the request and in the ordinance, we do have to speak to the consistency with the town's comprehensive plan. In looking at the comprehensive plan, that plan designates this parcel as general commercial. In the plan, it notes that heavy commercial and general commercial are closely associated, and that the general commercial designation is for properties in commercial, retail, office, and service uses primarily along portions of major roadway corridors within the community. It also specifically calls out service, automobile service-related enterprises like gas stations. So the, the future land use designation here is directly consistent with what we are proposing, the type of use that we're proposing, the location along a major thoroughfare. And so we submit that we are in a direct alignment with the comprehensive plan in addition to the goals that the staff report has highlighted in terms of economic impact, land use consistency. One of the other things that we want to highlight is the consistency with the existing uses in that area. So right around there, you have the Waffle House that's immediately adjacent across Pierce's Road, that's a 24-hour location. You've got the Bojangles that's located diagonally across North Arendal, that has a drive-through. You've got the ABC Store immediately adjacent to this site. You've got the Popeyes, it's located a little bit down the way again, that has a drive-through. And then you've got the Valera Convenience Store Gas Station and the 7-Eleven, which is a 24-hour operation. So what is being proposed as part of this PD Development Request is consistent with the existing uses. We're not changing anything or adding anything new to this surrounding area. We just submit that what's being proposed will be more aesthetically pleasing, beneficial for those traveling along those thoroughfares and for Sheets' customers. So looking at the conditions which staff went through, and I appreciate staff's detail in describing those conditions, but do want to speak to the reasoning behind those conditions as we move forward. The first three that we'll speak to go to minimize and reduce any activity to the rear of the property. Throughout this process, Sheets has been acutely aware of the adjacency to a townhome community that is behind the existing Sheets site. As part of this proposal, Sheets wants to minimize and reduce any activity that is back there and move it towards the central portion of the site. So the first condition that we have proposed is the location of the fuel pumps. As you can see, we're proposing them exactly where they are currently. Additionally, I do want to highlight for the Commission and the Board that this site is uniquely situated, so it essentially is located at the intersection of Pierce's and North Arendal with substantial frontage along both. So to comply, to strictly comply with the ordinance in terms of locating the fuel canopy, the only location that would strictly comply with it would be to place it in the rear of the site. And so because of the conversations with the townhome community and wanting to not have the fuel canopy located directly next to that existing townhome community, Sheets is proposing, and we are proposing, to locate them where they are currently. That will move that activity away from that boundary line, keep it where it is, and allow for safe access to and from the site. The second condition is for off-street parking. What we're proposing is to allow for just slightly additional parking in front of the primary building facade. We're proposing 45 total parking spots. 19 of those will be on the side with 26 located along the frontage or to the right of the canopy. Under the standard, if we were to strictly comply with the ordinance, it would be a maximum, I believe, 22 or 23 parking spots that we could have located along the frontage in the right. So we're just asking for a modification of a few spots there. Again, the reason that we're doing that is because the only, really the only location that we could place other spaces or to move spaces to would be to the rear of the property, which again, we don't want to do out of respect for our neighbors and to minimize the impact to the existing townhome community. So Sheets has been very intentional to try to locate these as much as they can in compliance with the ordinance, but we do ask for a slight modification there. It, it's also to allow for, for the drive aisles with the pickup window to be adequate to facilitate ingress, egress, and circulation at the site. The third condition that we're proposing was also in consultation with, with our neighbors here and with the intent of moving the dumpster enclosure from the rear of the property to the front. We are proposing design conditions, and those conditions will, will mirror the, the primary facade and the facade of the building, so there will be consistency in terms of the enclosure. This location was selected to avoid any, again, impact to drive aisles or circulation, and also to minimize any impact to the rear of the property and to our neighbors there in the townhome community. For the facade conditions, for the primary facade, we're asking for a slight modification there to at least 27%. That 27% is for visually transparent windows. In addition to that, and as you can see on the building elevation here, we've proposed a false or opaque window there, kind of to the right along the primary facade to create a better visual aesthetic. The reason for this proposal is because Sheets has essentially maxed out the visual transparency they're able to do along that facade. If they were to add anything else, it would be in areas that are critical for safety, including offices or bathrooms, and obviously you can't have visually transparent windows that go into those areas for safety and privacy reasons. But Sheets is, is willing to add in those false or opaque window designs to supplement what they're able to do and what they're proposing here with the front facade. Additionally, what is proposed here increases that, that, that primary facade visually transparent design from what is existing there today. On the secondary design, or the secondary facade transparency, we're proposing at least 24%. That's a slight modification from the 30%. Again, it is the same rationale where Sheets has looked at, at this a million different ways, looked to try to, to meet that strict requirements of the ordinance. But again, if they were to locate some of these design elements, they would be in safety, they'd be in bathrooms or offices and create safety and privacy issues. And so that's why we're proposing that modification to you this evening. And then the final conditions relate to setbacks and buffering. For the street setback from Pierce's Road, as staff mentioned, we're proposing a modification to 10 feet there to allow for the location of the dumpster enclosure. That dovetails with the proposed location of the dumpster enclosure away from the rear of the property to minimize the impact to our neighbors there in the townhome community. So that is the reason. So that is the reason for that proposal. On the side perimeter buffer, we're proposing a three-foot perimeter buffer along that boundary line with the ABC Store. I believe the owner of that property is here this evening. There's been a lot of discussion with him. The intent of that proposal is to maintain what is there, to maintain the existing curb lines and drive access and not to impact those. It also, again, allows for the circulation and the drive aisles that we're showing here on the site plan. If we were to bump those out, that would dramatically impact the circulation on the site. For the street skate buffer for North Arendale and Pierce's, an important thing for both the Commission and the Board to remember is that we do have an master plan here that will be applied as we move forward. And so we're showing maintaining existing landscaping and trees that are located along those frontages. We just can't add to those existing landscape areas because of utility lines and utility infrastructure that we would potentially impact if we proposed additional plantings. So that is the reason for that request. Additionally, we've proposed that condition out of completeness. We would submit that we're exempt from that requirement. If you look at Section 5.612(c)(1) of the UDO, where it says where the primary building facade is visible from the street right-of-way, there's an exemption that applies. We would submit that our primary facade is visible from those rights-of-way, but to the extent that we do need to include that condition, we include it out of completeness. And again, the reasoning there is that we don't want to put trees that would impact utility easements and infrastructure. We've worked to locate other plantings around the site to supplement it, but that's the reason for that proposed condition. The final condition is the parking lot landscaping. It's for those four spaces that are located directly in front of the front entrance of the proposed development. We're asking for a slight modification to the 50-foot distance from a canopy tree requirement. We're with, those spaces are within a couple feet of meeting that requirement. But again, Sheets has looked to try to best situate plantings and landscaping and as an accommodation or to supplement that. In this condition, we're proposing planters along the sidewalk there to create a better visual and to visibly soften the parking area in front of the building. So we are asking for a modification there, but are proposing some additional planters there right in front of the building to create a better aesthetic. Finally, I do want to touch on the community outreach. As staff mentioned, there's been a community meeting. There's been ongoing dialogue with the neighbors, with staff. We appreciate staff's extensive work on this. They've been great to work with. The community's been great to work with, and Sheets has worked to try to implement as many of the comments from their neighbors into this design. That's been an important piece of all that, and that's what you see in the conditions. The conditions came about in response to many of the comments that Sheets received throughout this process. And Sheets believes that what is being proposed, although we are asking for certain conditions, satisfies the requirements of the ordinance. If you look at the PD ordinance provisions in Section 2.215 and 3.5.6, they talk repeatedly about creating flexibility in those standards for the efficient use of land, for promoting infill development, for promoting quality design and respect for the surrounding character and land uses. We would submit we meet all of those and that this is intentional to minimize the impact to our surrounding neighbors, to create a very usable site that gets people in and out in a safe and efficient way, that creates a better quality product overall, both for those that are just traveling by and for those using the site. And so we submit that this meets the requirements of the ordinance, that this creates a quality development, and we would ultimately ask that it be approved.
Let our question slide, and I'll let the mayor go.
Any questions, comments from Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Banks?
Actually, so, on page 202, which is Attachment 5, which lists the utility allocation Do we need to wait for him to return? All right. There is, one of the things that you've claimed two points on is enhanced buffer landscaping. Can you please help me understand, is that the, what is the enhanced buffer landscaping? Are those the planters? Or help me understand where that will be, since it just seems like you're actually removing a lot of the landscaping?
So, I believe we're maintaining a lot of landscaping. I'll have Heather speak specifically to some of that. There is some, I believe, increased landscaping along the rear as well. And we're also, one of the things I do want to mention proposing is six-foot, essentially like a privacy fence or a fence that will be located along that rear boundary line.
To protect the folks that are on nostalgia?
Correct. And what will, and we're willing to clarify this as part of any condition. It's not going to be chain link. The intent is to have some type of stone or masonry, something, again, that is appropriate for a transition from the residential use to a commercial use.
Okay. And so, in keeping with the pump location, are you going to be removing those tanks according to OSHA standards since those will have timed out as well?
So, yes, any standards, both state, federal, to the extent there are local standards and regulations, those will have to be removed and comply with all of those regulations. I know, I don't have the specifics, but I do know that that is a detailed process. And so there is a lot of oversight, but yes, those regulations will be strictly complied with.
Where exactly is the stormwater mitigation area? I just didn't see it on there.
So, there's, you want to go ahead? So, when it comes to stormwater mitigation, there are two things that are true. One is that the final determination, all of that occurs during construction drawing phase. So we did have a, we also, though, did have a technical review committee, a staff level committee.
Right, right, right.
And so Wade County Stormwater has seen this. My understanding is that because the general nature of the layout isn't changing, the stormwater doesn't change.
Okay. Perfect. Then, there's going to be a drive-through for pickup from what people can order, I guess, online or using their phones. Is this going to be where alcohol can also be purchased through this, or is this solely the food items that you make in the cafe?
Just for drive-through items. It's the prepared food, I believe. And so it won't be for alcohol. There are ABC regulations that would apply to that.
I wanted to make sure that I had a clear understanding of what that was going to entail.
Yes, absolutely. And on your, on our prior question related to the buffering, where we're proposing that additional buffering is both along, again, the residential boundary and along that commercial boundary, is trying to increase some of those buffer areas.
Okay. And so, the decreases in the buffering, which is kind of significant going from 10 to 3 along the property line between the Sheets and the ABC, that's going to be made up for, with enhanced protections and buffering for the, what is butting up against nostalgia?
Yes. And for the adjacency to the ABC Store, it's going to be maintained as is. The rationale there is to not impact existing curb lines. There is a shared access point there. And so, strict compliance there would, one, impact the adjacent ABC Store, potentially impact that shared access, and also impact the drive aisle that comes out of the pickup window. And so that was the balance that we tried to strike, is by just keeping it the same, not impacting those existing curb lines.
Okay. Excellent. And I realize that this question is a bit ludicrous, but I'm going to ask it anyway. For the sake of the folks that do live in the community that is just behind Sheets, what is the projected timeline from start to finish that we can anticipate once the ground is broken and the demo, you know, like, the demo through the reopening of the store, just so we have an idea of what those folks are in for, for that period of time?
Yeah, absolutely. I will defer to my other team members there just to make sure that we're not misstating anything, but we certainly want to provide as much of a snapshot as possible.
I'm sorry.
So, our timeline on these runs somewhere around 20 to 24 weeks.
24 weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
So, but some of that is, we complete construction and hand it to our operations team. So, construction probably finishes up four to six weeks earlier than that, and then the store goes in and does some training and et cetera, et cetera.
And that goes from, that's just not the rebuild portion, that's the demo as well from, okay, demo to doors open about 24 weeks?
Correct.
Okay. Wonderful. And then finally, can you just go through how, what you've proposed is better than what we've actually, what we asked for in the UDO? I guess some of the deviations are a little bit aggressive.
Yes, completely understand that question. And in our narratives, we have worked to try to provide that support. To the extent that there are additional clarifications in those conditions, either through the Board or through the Commission that we need to work through, Sheets is absolutely open to that. In terms of, in looking at the conditions and going through them, the pump location, for example, we've proposed keeping it where it is, where the existing pump location is at present. The rationale for that is for a couple reasons. One of, and they're tied together, given the strict requirement in the ordinance and our inability, if we strictly comply, to put it in between a facade and a right-of-way, where this is situated at the intersection and where Pierce's and North Arendale come to a peak with a lot of frontage there, really, the only location we could put it at would be at the rear of the site. And so, we have proposed keeping it where it is because putting it at the rear of the site will create more activity at that area. It will create more impact to our neighbors and the townhome community, and we just don't think that that is a better product at the end of the day. In terms of the dumpster enclosure, it's the same rationale. We've proposed putting it towards the front, still set back from the road, and again, with those, with the aesthetic enclosure to be consistent with the facade design. We propose that, again, to move it away from the rear of the site. The parking is the same rationale. Really, for parking, we're limited in terms of where we could locate it on the sides, and we would strongly prefer not to put it at the back to, again, avoid any conflict with the pickup area. And so the only activity at the rear is that pickup area. It allows for better safety and better control at the site. And then again, it prevents having light from cars that are parking back there shine into the community, and we think creates a better overall layout. On the facade design, those are because of limitations in terms of the visually transparent features we can add. I know in talking to Bob and Heather as part of this process, they've really looked to try to maximize that as much as they can. Where they could put additional visible transparent features would be, again, in those safety areas. It'd be in bathrooms and offices where Sheets just cannot have those. So overall, we think that what we've proposed creates a better product. It creates, it improves the existing product. It creates a more appealing visual product than what is there, and it creates a safer, less impactful development than if we strictly complied with everything in the ordinance. And we believe that this meets the intent of the ordinance in terms of respecting our neighbors, respecting an adjacent residential use, and trying to locate those activity centers in a central location on the site.
Thank you. Thank you. And Director Lauer, what are the specific, or perhaps you can answer as well, the specific, I'm assuming that there were some kind of recommendations from NCDOT for improvements? Have we gotten through that period, you know, like, part of the process yet that we can speak to any of those?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So, the, both, the TIA from the applicant has been submitted to us. We've talked to all the relevant stakeholders when it comes to transportation. The town will simply implement the findings of the TIA. What that means is there is an increment between what the old or the current design produces from a traffic impact standpoint, and then there's an increase for the new one, and we'll simply charge an impact fee for that increment.
Okay. All right. All right. Fantastic. That does it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so, I noticed when reviewing the summary of discussion from the neighborhood meeting, the first question residents noted was noise. And I know you've already addressed that in some degree, but Sheets' response notes one air machine to be relocated to the opposite side of the site. But when I was reviewing the proposed redevelopment image, I didn't see it. So, do you know if we have a visual representation of where that might be?
I believe it's on the site plan.
Yeah, one of them on Condition 7 in the top left, but the other one, is it on the right side near where all those parking spaces are someplace?
Hi, my name's Heather Timothy with Kimley Horn. Yes, correct. So there's one with a column pointing on the right side of this site adjacent to those parking spaces. There is one still on the left side. So when we've responded to that comment, it was with the previous layout that you saw. So we did still include one on the left side, just because the right side was getting extremely congested with trying to get as much as possible away from the neighbors. So one is remaining on the left side. Sheets likes to have at least two.
Kate, can you use the pointer to circle that?
Here, Heather, do you want to just come over here and show them? Because I'm not quite sure where you were. This is right here. So here is one of them. And then, this is the vent stack. It's hard to tell here. I can look at my printout. I can find it on one of our slides here.
The one, where's the other one on this side that it was talking about? Could we get a copy of what it is?
Is that the rear? Are you pointing to, is the rear?
Correct. Yeah, that's the rear that faces the residential area. And then there's supposed to be one over there, but they're going to add it.
So that you show us as well as the planning board, please? Which is, which is now going to become parking places?
And so, for right now, you have one that you're positive of where this space is? Okay.
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 Thank you.
Okay. Two right here. Okay, perfect.
Questions from the Board?
Would you, would you mind just summarizing what you were saying, and I'll visually show where it is to the audience?
Yes. In terms of the air pump location, there is one proposed in the rear there. Well, certainly, there's an existing one. Is that being removed?
Yeah, so, basically, in the old layout, one was
Two right here, okay, perfect.
Questions from the board?
Would you, would you mind just summarizing what you were saying and I'll visually show where it is to the audience?
Yes, in terms of the air pump location, there is one proposed in the, in the rear there. Well, certainly, there's an existing one, is that being removed?
Yeah, so, basically, in the old layout, one was at the rear and one was on the right side of the site, and now we have two at the rear.
Thank you.
All right, and then, my other question is, earlier you had mentioned how this new design was going to improve safety, can you elaborate?
So, in terms of that, we just believe this creates a better design in terms of, you remove the car wash, you've got just, again, the activity center that is located in the middle of the site, with the proposed pickup window, with there being, again, no noise, no significant queuing, given how it will operate, we think that promotes safety. And, again, just moving things from the back of the, the proposed development, again, to that centralized location, will just allow for better containment of site activities. So, we think that it promotes a better functioning site, safe access to and from the site, too, you're going to have less conflicting movements, we think that this promotes better circulation and safer circulation. So, those are the reasons we believe that this, this creates the safest possible development we could do at this site.
Thank you very much.
Just a few questions, real small. You've stated that petroleum station is considered outdated, how long do those typically stay in compliance?
So, the question is, in terms of the, the system needing to be replaced, how long is the lifespan of those systems?
The fuel system?
Yes.
So, they vary, and they have guarantees anywhere from 25 to 30, but we don't like ours to get older than 15. So, it's more of a proactive approach on our part to replace them.
So, when they go out of compliance, again, would you guys like to redo those again? Would we go through this process again?
We would most likely, yeah, so we would redevelop the site again prior to them running out of compliance, so.
And I can elaborate briefly on what a plan development zoning implication might be on that. So, with a plan development, the, the conditions of the site, as well as the site plan, is contingent on the, or is affected with the plan development designation. And so, if this site has the plan development designation, the, the conditions of, of the redevelopment of the site as proposed is what would carry with the site. And so, it would potentially either be another plan development request and/or maybe we'll have some newfound, different process in 15 years, or it may be a redevelopment of the site with this, with the same layout and the same conditions as proposed under this plan development.
To her point, the, as E Vs tends to become more popular? E V, so charged electric vehicles. So, somehow, the balance of the petroleum side and those offers may balance out.
Okay. You also mentioned with the drive-through, and you use the word walkout, is this a type of drive-through I'm thinking of like Chick-fil-A now has, or is this a window type for typical?
It'll be a window type, but, again, there's not going to be any transaction or any noise, but it will be the window style.
Okay, do we know a typical wait time that they have? Like, what's their method system? Do I call ahead?
Yeah, so, on our, use of our apps or calling ahead, which customers can do today, and then, how they finish the transactions, they actually take a parking stall and come in and pick it up. So, the, the intent of the window is to get them, instead of parking and coming in, to be able to go around the back of the store, and they'll hand it out as opposed to the customer parking and coming in to pick it up. But the order and the payment happens either on their phone or computer.
And that additional parking, is that what I'm seeing towards the bottom of the screen?
Was this the area that you were asking about, Commissioner?
Yes, that's correct.
The pickup?
No, so that's just parking, again, given our requirements under the ordinance for certain parking, and to try to locate parking not in front of the primary facade, that's where there's parking going to be located for, for folks going into the store. The drive aisle for the pickup window is shown there, and so, that is where there will be the delivery of the food, and then, that, that parking is just for, for individuals that are actually going into the store.
This is the window right here, as was pointed out?
Okay. I think you already answered my other question, which was going to be about the dumpster and just making sure it wasn't an eyesore, what would be surrounding it, being that it's now going to be towards the front of the vicinity.
Yes, absolutely, as part of our condition, we've highlighted that it will be kind of that masonry brick, and it will be consistent with the store facade. And, again, to the extent that we need to further clarify that in the condition, either if planning board or the commission would like us to do that, we're happy to, but it will be, it will match with the aesthetic of the store.
Of the building itself. And one last thing, can you just give me a little bit further explanation? I was trying to gain understanding when you were talking about the opaque in the windows in regard in the office space and the restrooms.
And Heather and Bob may be able to chime in here as well, but essentially, what Sheets has done is tried to maximize the visually transparent features on those facades, both the primary and the secondary facade. The primary facade, you see a lot of windows that are proposed, both at the entrance and along that front facade. We've proposed a false opaque design feature in addition to those transparent features. The reason we've done that is because the areas where we're unable to, to propose the visually transparent are safety and privacy areas, so bathrooms, offices, and so, we just can't have visually transparent features at those locations along the facade.
Wanted to clarify. Thank you, that's all my questions.
For the board of commissioners?
And for the dumpster enclosure, there is additional landscaping that will screen the enclosure that is proposed as part of the plan.
Yeah, I just know those typically start to pile up, it's garbage, so whether it's stopped leaking on the ground and whatnot, over time, it becomes an eyesore.
We understand, and the purpose of that condition is to make sure that it, again, it blends with the store, that is what we want to do in terms of a visual aesthetic.
What she just showed me, can you please show it on the screen, no, on the screen so the audience can know, you're talking about the shrubs?
One of it, let me pull that up.
For the public, Dennis?
We're good. For the public. If you could just summarize what you said into the microphone, that would be helpful, and then I can pull it up here.
So, around the dumpster enclosure is additional shrubs, oh yeah, thank you, Kate. And there are also additional trees to meet those streetscape requirements that are adjacent to the dumpster as well.
It's hard to tell on the screen, but these are little circles showing shrubs, just so everybody can see that.
Oh, in looking at the, the development and thinking about the sustainability of our town, have, has there been any consideration for any E V charging stations at this location as you all redevelop that?
So, our E V partners evaluate every site, so, we don't choose, we'll take, like, this site, we'll take it to them, and they'll decide if they have a need or an interest, and then, if they do, then it's incorporated at that time. But they look at every redevelopment site that we do.
So, they've already looked at this one and decided not to, or they will in the future?
They will, they will do it in the future.
Okay.
Questions or comments from the board?
I would like to get a, I guess, an update or a better understanding of what happens when, when that conversation is had. You know, just looking at the recent developments and different things that we've brought into the town, even charging stations have become a very popular thing, a very needed thing within our community. And so, as we redevelop one of our largest stations, I see that you all are adding, you know, fuel pumps, but I think it would be a really, really good opportunity in, you know, for our community to have those, to have one or two charging stations within this location as well.
Okay, we'll get that for you.
Any other questions, comments from the board of commissioners?
Commissioner Harrison, did you, did you want to ask that as a condition, or you just wanted an update?
Well, I, I, I would love, I would like for it to be a condition, however, I would like to hear what the, your partners, I would like the feedback from your partners before we, yeah.
It doesn't necessarily have to be a condition, they're only asking to modify nine components of the code, instead of they, in the construction plans, there's an E V charging station that's submitted, and it doesn't require a modification for the code, we can permit it by right.
We will certainly work to get as much information or clarification on that prior to coming back before we.
It would be a great, great advantage for our community, I think so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board of commissioners? At this time, we were here from members of the planning board.
From Director Lauer, what went into the decision-making to not require them to do any of the improvements along the roadway there in that intersection versus taking a traffic impact fee?
So, we look at the T I A, and we look at what are the proposed improvements, and we lay that against what our internal policies are. We've worked with our town attorney on this and concluded that the best way to meet, it's called the Nolan Dolan's taking test, is simply that they don't generate any additional improvements beyond an increment of trips, and so, to meet the takings test, what, how we're meeting that is we just charge in, in, in the increment of the impact fee.
Okay.
So, just really kind of a comment, I really have a problem with the dumpsters being right there as the gateway to Northern Zebulon, you know? Zebulon, or Sheets has been kind of a landmark, so to speak, you know, turn left off the highway and turn right at the Sheets, and now, it's going to be, turn right at the dumpsters at the Sheets, you see what I'm saying? I just don't like them being right out there at the intersection where, I mean, it's a major intersection, we see a lot of traffic, and we're just kind of like putting it right out there. I don't know how much these shrubs are going to hide this enclosure.
Yeah, and for that enclosure, we did obviously try to balance, obviously, any impacts with its location. That location came about, again, just to try to reduce the impact to our neighbors behind the property, where we proposed conditions, again, so that the, the materials used will be the same as those used in the store and be in alignment with that. So, in terms of how it will be viewed, the materials and the condition of it will align with the store. Certainly happy to try to look at what additional screening we can do, and certainly happy to take any comments back to Sheets, and, and obviously, we have our team members here, but that's the balance that we tried to, tried to really weigh here in terms of that location, and then trying to use it, use the same materials as the facade so that that visual impact would be the same as if the store was right there.
So, two things on the building elevation, the rear elevation, you're telling us there's a window, but the example you're showing us, there's two windows, so I was just wondering why there's two windows, if there's not a transaction window, just a pickup window. I know I've been to other Sheets where there's actually an order board, so this location will not have that order board.
Correct, there will be no actual ordering as part of the pickup window, there'll be no, I call it an intercom system or, or box there where they take an order, like you see at a McDonald's or Chick-fil-A, it will just be the drive aisle and a window that will, again, trigger a notification to a, a team member, and they will deliver the food, there's not, no exchange of cash or credit card or any of that.
So, but we don't know why there's two windows shown here?
Our brand department is, who was driving that design?
Okay, it just seems odd, if it's only a pickup window, that you're going to have two different windows, so it's, and then, the other elevation that I have a problem with is the right elevation, which if I'm correct, would be facing Pierces? Is that correct? Where your, your propane storage and stuff, this is what would be facing Pierces, correct?
Correct.
And so, we have a roof access ladder that's going to be, like, it just seems like the nicer entrances on the other side of the building, does that make sense? I mean, you have umbrellas and benches and stuff like that on that side, and then the side that faces the road is propane tanks and an access ladder.
The proposal there does show a number of other features, right, that are for the wall articulation facing Pierces. I think the intent there was to, again, create a visual aesthetic or kind of a better aesthetic with some of those.
The sides of the building are, is driven by the floor plan inside, so, the pickup window, obviously, where our inside layout is done, the kitchen would be in the back left-hand corner where the pickup window is, so the transaction with the customer would be on the driver's side, which forces the seating, the indoor seating, which is the nicer-looking exterior elevation to the, to that side of the, the property. We could certainly find a different location for the propane, and I believe we would have an option, I would have to research it a little bit, but even the ladder, I think we could try to get that to the backside of the building.
I mean, you know, currently, I'm used to seeing the propane tanks on the side of the building, that's not really the, the biggest eyesore to me, it would be the mechanical access that you're showing there. It's just not a very nice elevation to see. When I look at the other side that's facing A B C, there's a very nice frontage, you know, entrance to the building, and then I go over here where I'm going to drive by every morning, and I'm, you know what I mean? So, so I would make a suggestion to, you know, revise how that looks. Since we're, you know, deviating so much from how this is going to look on our adjacent roads, I think I just want to have the nicest elevation that we're going to see on our adjacent roads. So. And then, so there was the concern about the air compressor that Trenton had brought up, as well as the neighbors, so, are, we are going to look at relocating that from that back area? Okay. Because my other concern was the current one, the, the cars line up to use that air pump, and if they're lining up on that entrance coming into the property, I could see that backing up there as well, so. Those are all that I had, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the planning board?
Yes, I have a question, so you said there's not going to be an order board, I was just looking at this, I guess, right here on that, it looks like an order board. I'm thinking of, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the Rogers Road Sheets?
So, those are electric panels? Yeah, it, it's not an order board. Again, to the extent that we want to, either the commission or the board wants clarification in the condition, or as part of the conditions, we're happy to provide that, but there will not be an order board, there will not be any system that allows for that to happen, there will not be any way to actually hand money or a credit card over as part of this process.
And so, when they get to the window, what allows them to know that they're out there again? again?
Yeah, there's a, there's a indicator in the concrete, so when they reach that spot, they'll get a buzz in the store that somebody's there to pick up their order.
Okay. I guess also, I was just looking at the traffic coming in, and then all around to the, to the back, and then up again, and that's how they're going in? That's the main way we're getting to that window?
Will be an access. There's considerations, obviously, for the distance from the access to the intersection with North Pierces. That's why that is located there, is so that there is not a conflict of somebody coming in and out that will potentially cause an unsafe movement at that intersection, so that's where that location is. They could also access it by coming off of North Pierces and circling around. That's why there's proposed large drive aisles to, to prevent, again, any conflict of movement on the interior of the site, but that's the reason for the location of the access.
Right here, when you're, okay, where that, yeah, right in that section right there, when you're going around, that could potentially be a little dangerous spot as people are coming into park.
And there'll be some signage there as well to, to notify folks that there is a, is the pickup area coming through. So there will be signage, and Sheets will certainly work to, to address any safety concerns with that, to notify people going in both directions of the, the drive aisle.
Thank you.
Is there anything we can do at that bottom entrance? Because right now, there are people that will drive up and make a left over the double yellow line and cut off incoming traffic to go into that entrance instead of getting up to the intersection to make a left to go in from the top. Is there anything they can do, like put a median in, or put a sign, no left turn signage added there?
So we've concluded that they, we can only require them to do what the TIA asked them to do, which is not that. What we can do, though, is utilize some of the impact fee dollars to do that project, to do what you're describing. You know, also, as the DOT does continual studies, both on the road, both the DOT and other developers too. So it's something we monitor, but I, there's no mechanism right now that can force that to happen.
Just, I've seen, and I know that we have all seen people make that left, and sometimes it's close, sometimes there's been accidents there, it's just, you know, trying to mitigate that.
Any other questions, comments from the Planning Board? Thank you. Oh. The public hearing. Public hearing is an opportunity for the public to express thoughts, ideas, concerns, and opinions regarding the proposed requests to the Board of Commissioners and Planning Board. The Board of Commissioners, Planning Board, staff, and applicant will not engage in dialogue at this time. If the public has questions pertaining to the development, please contact town staff or the applicant following the joint public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the proposal? Come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
My name is Dominic Schilling. I live at 207 Nostalgia Lane. I never thought I'd see the day where I'd be coming up here and speaking in favor of this. However...
No offense.
I've certainly took part in the original community meeting. The plans they proposed at that meeting were very different than what you see tonight, and I will say that I was very pleased when I looked at the new plans on the town website. It addressed, addresses almost all of the concerns that myself and the other community members have. By the way, I am also, in full disclosure, the president of the HOA for that community, so I've heard from a lot of the residents. Our big concerns were, number one, noise, traffic certainly is always a concern. The fact that they're willing to put up a wall, the more solid of a wall we can have, the better we like it. That would eliminate some of the noise, that would eliminate people cutting through the neighborhood to get to the Sheets, that would eliminate trash blowing from the Sheets to our neighborhood. The dumpster enclosure was a particular pet peeve of mine because they tend to get emptied at about 4:45, 5 o'clock in the morning, and when they are where they are now, they're right up against our neighborhood. So them being moved to the front of the property was very helpful. I do think aesthetically that it won't be an eyesore, number one, because of the proposal that they're making to keep the enclosure looking nice with the, in harmony with the building, but also, if you go by there, that front corner, actually, from the road, that front corner sits down, I don't know, probably about 10 feet or so. So it's below road level if you actually look at that corner. So I don't think it would pose an eyesore for people driving by there. So anyway, with all the changes that they've proposed, I know it's out of keeping with the strict interpretation of the UDO, but I do think it meets the intent of the UDO and does make for a better overall safer environment, the traffic flow would be better, more, another fuel pump means less people waiting in line for the fuel pumps. I just really, truly support this fully, and I hope you guys do as well. Thank you both for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
In favor? Name and address, please.
Yeah, Brian Hicks. I serve as General Manager of Wake County Alcohol Beverage Control, 1212 Wicker Drive, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27604. Just wanted to get up before you all tonight. We're the Northwestern Neighbors, spoken for this site. At the neighborhood meeting, we had a lot of concerns that existed, and staff and Sheets and Kimlinghorn have done a great job of addressing all those concerns, particularly of the delivery of our products to our store. I talked to Ms. Lauer before the meeting tonight, all our concerns that exist now with access for our customers during construction, delivery of our products during construction, he's met those right there. We're in favor of condition number seven, as you're seeing your packet, and I just want to say we're supportive of the whole project altogether.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak in favor? State your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name's Drew Hempill. I live at 105 Nostalgia Lane, which is directly behind Sheets. I am very largely in favor of this proposal and love all of the features that have been suggested and the small steps that have been addressed to help us that, you know, were previously voiced in some of the earlier meetings with the community. Just at a minimum research, my only complaint would be that that wall that is impartially or partially directly behind my home be 10 feet tall, six feet is a minimum for these sorts of, of features. I've seen this community grow in the 14-plus years I've lived here, and it doesn't really matter where any of this noise comes from on this piece of property. I can hear it pretty loudly a lot of times, and being awoken at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning when I have to get up for work or other things is not pleasant. It's not always the, the trucks that come deliver things, it's the people that come through as well, so anything that we can do to assist in keeping that at bay would be really nice because while the natural barrier is good, it's really only helpful about six months out of the year, so that, that would be my, my only consideration that I would make different in this. But I, I do overwhelmingly support how it's designed and would just like to see more protection for the neighborhood and specifically the people that are directly behind it. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Hearing none? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the project? Hearing none? Is there anyone who wishes to speak neither for or against the project? Hearing none? I will now close the public hearing.
We did receive four emails.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Do we have any letters or emails or other correspondence?
Yes, sir. We did receive four emails. Would you like for those to be read?
Please.
The first one is from Karen Underhill. "Good day. I have lived in Zebulon before Sheets came to town. During construction and after, a few neighbors of Sheets sent numerous letters to management requesting a barrier between the townhomes and Sheets. We never received one, one response. I am now requesting a wall or some soundproof barrier to help with the noise and to stop others from cutting through our subdivision at all hours. Traffic is also a problem with cars and people entering or exiting the facility onto Pierces Road. Living close by, I rarely go into Sheets due to the litter throughout the facility. After going to the first meeting, I was happy to hear they have possibly reconsidered orienting the building and pumps and moving the trash's receptacle to another location." So that was your first email. Your second one is from Heidi Creach, and I'm sorry if I butchered that name. "Town is Zebulon. I own property and live in the Wakeland Townhomes community at 217 Nostalgia Lane, adjacent to Sheets gas station. I have heard Sheets is planning on doing a lot of improvements, expansions to their store. As the adjacent property has and will continue to be affected by their tremendous success, I'd like some things done to improve and protect my property's value. I'd also like to see Sheets better protect their neighbors," in parentheses, it says Wakeland Townhomes, "by implementing the following at the minimum. First and foremost, I'd like to see something done to make it easier for our community traffic to get safely in and out of our community. It's difficult when traffic trying to access the entrance to Sheets off of Pierces Road is blocking our only entrance. Install adequate privacy fencing along the shared property line of Sheets and Wakeland Townhomes and also the property line between Wakefield Church and Wakeland Townhomes, as these areas are shortcuts when people are walking to the store. Install an adequate landscape buffer along the privacy fencing, hopefully to keep people out of our neighborhood and also help with the noise. Also, do something with the lights so they don't shine directly into our neighborhood. Being forced to be Sheets' neighbor after my purchase, I also think it would be a nice gesture for Sheets to give adjacent property owners a discount card to their store. Again, we need help with Sheets' traffic, Sheets' customers, people walking through, fencing, and landscaping for our parents, safety and noise reduction. I am submitting these requests through email because I am unable to attend the meeting in person as scheduled for Monday night, October the 13th." Your third email is from Paula Barton. "I am a resident of the Wakeland Townhomes, which are immediately adjacent to the project's address. The intent of this email is to voice my support for the proposed changes listed below. Approval of these planned changes will positively impact our privacy and security by preventing pedestrians from cutting through Wakeland and our backyards to get over to Sheets. In addition, these changes will improve noise abatement. Sheets will rebuild the building and the pumps with the same setup that they have now, with the pumps in front of the building facing the street. Sheets will move the trash receptacle and enclosure up toward the front corner of the property where Pierces Road meets Arendale Avenue. Sheets, while still planning on having a drive-through pickup window, will not install a speaker. Sheets will commit to building a six-foot-tall wall/fence between the back of Sheets and our townhomes property. Sheets will also add some additional trees along the back to further prevent some noise. I hope the Board of Commissioners vote to approve these plans. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on this project." And your final email is from Rodrick. "My name is Rodrick Silver, and I own property in the Wakeland Townhouse neighborhood that's parallel to Sheets on Arendale Avenue, Zebulon. I would like to request a permanent and physical wall barrier parallel to the Wakeland Townhouse neighborhood. There are issues with noise and light pollution from the traffic that frequents the Sheets property. Sheets mentioned a shrubbery barrier, but this is not sufficient. A stone wall would be more sufficient in impeding the noise and light pollution." And that is all of the emails that we received.
Thank you. Concludes our public hearing. I will now close the public hearing. I think we were referred this matter to the Planning Board.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Further discussion?